What else is shut tomorrow? Door sit downstairs, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth. Or is it twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fourth and twenty-third. I mean, I see, but they've never been closed to the road before.
I thought I seen it down at the door, twenty-third. Just here. Like, pal, it's a nice little weekend. Five-dayer. Good morning, Phil. Still with the party yesterday, so.
I would see you forever.
I got two years to see you. Right from the law school.
Morning, how we doing today? Good, we just have a seat anywhere. You what? You're on the agenda, so yeah, you're important.
You can sit in one of the comfortable chairs.
I'm good right here, Kyle, thank you.
How's everything going for you?
Good.
Tammy, is it, court not shut twenty-third, too?
Well, is it twenty-third?
I could've seen on the door downstairs.
The court, court, or the court is closing.
I seen twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and Phil.
That's just for a third floor.
But you guys are shut, blocked Friday. Doesn't seem like Black Friday should be here.
Well, I know, no kidding, or Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I didn't know it was Thanksgiving, I like my dressing.
That one's next week, it's December.
It's gone fast.
Oh man, do shut the streets. They're in Christmas shopping.
I bought a good part of my Christmas shopping done.
Well, when you get done with yours, why not mine?
Mine takes a day. Had to make a case.
Yes, that's what we like to be, too.
Think I love it, think I love it.
They do, yeah, we like to make it up weeks.
Twenty minutes out there? Mapleton? What's the other one, Amboy?
Amboy, so, um, this, I graduated from Maple River, but before that, it was Maple River, Good Country.
We went through good thunder on coming home, and so we say we went through it.
Okay, I'm gonna start the recording.
It is eight o'clock, let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as its best to draw. A quick discussion. I always gotta look around the pole. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the agenda in minutes of November nineteenth? We also have a few claims to sign. They were approved last week, but we didn't get them signed. Motion by Plapp. Second by Los. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Close, motion carries unanimous.
It's not as many as it looks.
Say I have them on the way back, and they're all signed.
Okay, did you meet you last week?
That everything?
Phil, we have a monthly update today?
Our three-month update. Well, as you know, we kept busy the last couple months of election stuff. I need to pay the radio, even got on TV a couple nights, so. That was a process, I'm glad it's done, don't wanna do it again. But it worked, we passed, so, that was the main thing. Now, as I passed, one thing I need to talk to you guys about is, in the Arca money, we did set aside money for, uh, first of an ambulance at the vote pass. Talking with the different ambulance companies, right now, we're looking at twenty-four to twenty-six month out from date of order to the procedural. So, if we're gonna allocate funds for an ambulance, it has to be spent timely with the Arca money, something we need to be moving on, because two years out, we're looking at, you know, November twenty-twenty-four.
Well, there's, there's a date that has to be obligated by, but then there's also a date after that that has to be spent by. I don't have those dates on top of my head, but there, there is two separate things. Obligation people already have done.
Twenty-four and twenty-six.
Yeah.
So, that's something that I'd like to get started on. My question is, as far as the process for doing that, there's something we need to do as far as?
Gotta get on the committees.
Back on the committee.
Yeah, because we've had it off for a long, we better go back to the committee.
I'm gonna start the process of setting up folks, bids, that's no problem, do that. We just purchased that one ambulance through donations that we received from, from residents. So, we did acquire three bids for that process, we're looking at the exact same box for this, for this next ambulance, uh, different chassis option, but the exact same box. Is that something we need to do another set of three bids on, or can we use the bids as fire? And you're on dance that today, that's something we need to look at, if we need to do three bids again.
I think you gotta do all the bids, because it's Arca money, and, you know, they need the bids.
Yeah, it, it should be.
Yeah, I don't think we can circumvent that.
Okay, so I'll start working on that process. Now, elections over, we catch up a lot of processes, they get pushed to the wayside during that process. Uh, we did, I was able to acquire some new equipment from the state, free of charge, we did get a couple more ventilators to put in, trucks that do not have ventilators. So, that'll be a nice asset for, for the county. And it'll cost, and we can post. Yesterday, I completed, I just had the GEMT, that's the Ground Emergency Medical Transport Grant that we write every year through the state, and that's a reimbursement program for Medicaid to try to make this better with Medicaid than the little bit we get from one of the calls. So, we just completed that process yesterday, we did a recap yesterday. That's all been submitted to the state now, so that's, that's done another way. New hires, um, got some things going on now, we passed the vote. Actually hired one part-time, one full-time, I made an offer to a full-time paramedic yesterday. I have a couple more to interview, so. That's, that's interviewing an app that's going real well right now. We did do our training last night, our monthly training. Now with the, the training complex, or UBC building, got a lot of good classes coming up. At first year, we're doing hog five training, that's a two-day class in January. And so, we'll be able to put the, the big truck right inside the building, have the classroom area on one side, the hands-on training on the other side, so we're doing that there, we're also doing ER day, end of January versus February. That's a full day of training we do, we're gonna bring in the University of Iowa simulation trailer. It's kinda like, it's a hands-on thing where they do two or three simulations at the same time, you go through those trailer. A part of it's set up like the back of an ambulance, part of it's set up like an ER, we go through that and train. Once again, we'll be able to put that truck right inside our building and do this training, other time outside, so. We have those two trains set up, we're also doing a, a pre-hospital trauma class. That's also a two-day class. Be doing our regular monthly training in March, and then we're doing it in June, where it's a view of operation class in April, so. We have stuff planned out first through April now for, for training. Also, we have a new process with Doc Line Beer Medical Director, as far as skills labs. We're gonna do that more hands-on than, than soon, like we've done in the past. So, we'll be going out to each service before Springfield work gets started to do, um, skills labs in person, and that has to be signed off, each person's assigned off on that to stay active within the system. So, last night in our training, we didn't have an owl last night. Come over here to get an owl, and Derek said, prefer not to use these anymore, is that correct? What's the process to get an owl down at the training facilities, is there something I need to buy, is there something you use Arca money for? I got something in place by January. For that class we got coming up. The problem with BMS is, we can't bring everybody in at the same time, or we leave the communities uncovered throughout the county, so somebody's about to stay back. So, being able to put this out, stream it out, where they can actually participate in class at their facility is, is huge. And using the owl for the past how many months, it kinda got spoiled last night, trying to do a laptop was kinda pain in the butt.
Yeah, why, why don't you?
I asked Derek yesterday, they're about a thousand dollars, I guess.
We can probably use Arca money for it. If you got till January before you need it, definitely.
Yeah, I don't know, I need to talk to Derek to find out, you know, if there's the delayed shipping notes.
There wasn't for that one, I think we got that pretty quickly.
I'd say less than a week.
Yeah.
Oh, really, okay. That's what I don't know, you want me to submit something to the Arca committee?
Yeah.
Quest?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we'll have a meeting.
Aren't those two different, that they don't wanna hook up together?
That's the very similar one to use the last night, that these two are paired together.
Well, they are paired, unless they were having a problem that they couldn't get them to hook up.
Well, we had a problem last week, because it needed to reboot, I guess, so, I, I don't think, I think whatever the problem is.
It's something about when, when someone uses one of them, then they get unpaired, and you have to go through a process to repair them, so it's.
I only used the last night, Derek said he went ahead and come in early this morning to try to get it repaired, and.
That's why they're, they, we've set them up so that they can't be, so that we don't have that issue.
I was gonna say, so if they don't pair up, buy one that matches and give them the other one. But if you guys have a pair.
I think one's a pro, and one's a three, or something like that.
Yeah.
They need to patch these two up, and we take one of these, or by going to go there, whatever's easier for these to be paired, if we can work through that.
Yeah, that's beyond us.
Yes.
I don't wanna know how to do that.
Starting that, that's about all I have.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
To the past.
Very good work going on around frigging scenes and stuff.
Things are going well.
I don't miss going to meetings.
I don't either. Actually took a couple days off after the election, then went and played with the new grandbaby for a couple days, and picked it back to work, so. That was kinda nice, too.
Yeah. Anything else for? Thanks, Phil.
Thank you, guys.
Next thing on our agenda is, uh, real estate for the city of West Bend. Waiver on consolidation. I have no idea what it's about, do you have a letter on it?
Yeah, it should be in your page.
Okay.
But this came from attorney Michael Boyd.
Yeah, we see.
Hoping you said something like this before. The county can.
Oh, yeah.
Leave the consultation.
Right.
And that's what he's asking for.
Yeah. Yeah, I read it, no, I forgot about it. Do I have a motion to approve the real estate annexation for the city of West Bend?
The waiver.
The waiver.
Allomed.
Motion by Stacker. I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing, uh, do a roll call vote.
Stacker?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Los?
Yes.
Plapp?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes. Both can carry unanimous. We gotta wait a couple minutes, it's on the agenda, we're at fifteen. It is. Where are you, can I get you to come up here?
Thirty-five years. Congratulations, Benji, and thank you very much, and for all your years of service. It's thirty-five years.
Yes. Actually, I did a couple years part-time with them.
Wow.
So.
We can say it, no, thirty-five.
I'm never making plans. Thanks, anyhow.
It'll work out, if you think it's your man, you know, you might, you know, less, right? You're gonna be with your wife.
While you had a fight with my wife.
Yeah, thanks for sharing it.
Congratulations.
Thanks again, Larry, and God, thank you.
I, I'll say a few words here.
Thank you, thanks for, while you're done.
Thank you.
Thanks for it done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Larry, I've known Larry for quite a few years. He was hired in, on October one, in nineteen eighty-seven, and like you said, he, he worked some part-time, I believe, and then he started full-time on that actual thing, so he has over thirty-five years of experience. Uh, Larry, he, uh, he was actually our last employee that actually was down in the, in the landfill, so Larry knows an awful lot about the garbage, and the refuse, and where it was all stored. Valuable resource that way. We're, in eighty-seven, we were working there on the east side of the road, weren't we, and then we started up on the north end while you were here, right? So, Larry knew where those cells were at, east of the road, why it was coming in there, and why we have to do maintenance, and then also, on that north end, we put in a, a leachate system, a lagoon, Larry saw that, Larry ran a scraper for us, ran the compactor, things we, we did not have right now. Saw the evolution of, we used to pay garbage by a pubic yard. We evolved into getting a scale, getting an office, getting our, uh, recycling transfer station up there, and then move into the garbage transfer station, so Larry's been involved in quite a bit. Like I say, he's taking with him a lot of just, when I call up, hey Larry, over here on the east side, what's going on over there, Larry? But, uh, Larry's retiring, and we certainly wish you a handsome. Very, uh, very happy retirement, enjoying life, so. And on behalf of the transfer station, the road department, we'd just like to present a little appreciation of all the years. And thank you very much.
There's four.
You all need it?
Yeah.
Hold on, I gotta get it.
There we go, one, two, three.
Something like that, so.
Go, one, two, three.
Even though. Don't be a stranger, Larry. Come in and visit.
You will.
Definitely. We're up to gravel pit leases with tenants.
Yeah. I have Matt Norman here, I also invited in, uh, here we go, okay, Josh Rockler. So, we'll go ahead and talk about Matt's, uh, in your folder there, Matt rents what we call the Maguire Pit. Actually, we just, uh, we just finished crushing there, and doing some work in there. That is an active pit right now. The area, it changes quite a bit, Matt knives. Talk about it, make adjustments till we have to. Uh, right now, Matt's, uh, grant fee pays us one hundred, one hundred ninety-one dollars per year, so. So, I believe that's fair, I don't know what the board would, uh, what the board's feelings on it, we did send that letter out terminating with the intent of renewing with them, and I think Matt has, this fall, put some fertilizer on that, that correct man.
Yes, you're, you're going with a three-year lease again?
Yeah, we'd like to go with a three-year lease, I would, anyway.
On one side is rocky, really rocky, and the other one.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely after you get through that, uh, topsoil, which varies the amount of topsoil, it, uh, it's gravel underneath it.
Would you consider lower, be that involved, because the west side that you continue to, on, is actually the best part of that farm? The east side is very, very rocky.
It is.
Well, that picture that's got the green in it, where it says approximately, you farmed through that now, but that was, basically that mountain's, because it's all rock.
Right. I would, I would not disagree with that statement that where we are actually getting our gravel from is probably the better.
And you know the board, I have no problem with.
What do you think?
Maybe we'll just take twenty-five bucks and you go off.
Fine with that.
Because you're taking the good ground away from him.
Yeah.
Is, is, is it actually twelve acres on the west side, because the big gravel pile should be sitting on there, and they might.
Adjusted, that, that area is not active.
Because basically, till the hole down is gone now, right?
It'll have to be adjusted.
Then we have the week.
Yeah, so the acres will be adjusted that way.
Right.
Yeah, I have no problem with that, yeah, I don't think, nobody on, anybody on the board got any issue with that.
I don't, I don't.
As a, how long's it been at that one ninety-one, Doug, you know?
Three years.
That makes it the second time you've taken a gun, right? Since I've had it.
At least.
Did it get the air mission, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, we'll reduce to one sixty-six?
Yeah.
Three, oh, on everybody?
You know what the CSR is by chance? I mean, just curious.
I guess it's in the fifties.
Okay.
All right, we will get a lease draft, but. All right. Thanks, dear friend. Okay, when Josh Rockler does come in, we will, just with him, if that's all right, if he would just move on to some of the other things around the agenda. I included this in your electronic file, we'll talk a little bit about wages. I still have not received, I don't know, Tammy, did you receive any kind of a, um, proposal from the Secretary of Road? But this, this data that I filed was from the Iowa County Engineer Service Bureau. Oh, there's Josh right there. We'll go ahead and talk to Josh just a little bit. Thanks for coming in, Josh.
Yeah.
Okay, so Josh, he farmed some area in the Irvin to pit, which is approximately fourteen acres, it's not fourteen acres anymore. Actually, on that west side, we went in, had some gravel, uh, for, for asphalt. I don't know what that's adjusted to. It's very poor ground, and Josh and I were visiting, it might be worth it to just not even, not even include that in our area, because the last couple of years, I don't know if it's.
Yeah, nothing, there's nothing there.
Crop in there, or the crop's been planted, but it's really not produced anything. And then he has the aror pit, which is down, uh, Redding's gravel and excavating, uh, mine some, it's down by, uh, off Hundred Fifty Street, straight west of the Galbraith Row, there, and, uh, Josh rents that for. And Josh rents that for, you bailed that for hay.
Yes, yes.
For that Irvington gravel pit, we have that at 178 right now. And for the Aurora, it's 505 per acre, plus per acre. Approximately five acres of hay down in the middle of the border.
How much was the Aurora?
It's 500 total.
Yeah, it's 500 bucks an acre.
So say 500 an acre, that's a little high.
Yeah, it was $100 an acre.
Sorry, $100 per acre.
Grow crop ground isn't much.
Yeah, it says per year instead of per acre there.
Okay, $500 per year, sorry. $500 per, 500 to the south.
So that's, that's pretty steep cashing up, Doug. He's a good negotiator.
Please do it other ways.
So you're paying $178 for that Irvington one, and you haven't got a crop off of it in two years?
Uh, part of that. The, the west part of it. There's, I don't know what.
Uh, there's like eight acres of that, the rest of it didn't produce anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the comments said there was half a pound. There was like eight acres that did. I think 110 bushel per acre or something. I got like nine, I got like 900 bushel of corn off of it. Yeah, it's not even common for a part of it, there's nothing there.
What's your idea? Nothing, or?
Just reduce the acres, just all the?
I mean, we'll, we'll go down with our Zeta all the measure of. Yeah, we'll go down. What we've been doing with Luke on these is we've been, before we crush and after we crush, but we'll go fly that area and get the, get the area of the, what's being tilled.
Is it, is it kind of that, while there's what looks like a sandier spot just to the right side of the red line for the section stuff, where it narrows out?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty much east of, eliminating everything to the west of the, this section line. Here's what I.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was wondering.
Talking about eliminating that. Even down here. Yeah, because there's nothing for rock, and that's why I go that light's on there.
So we'll, we'll get it adjusted.
Where it narrows out there.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
You're gonna leave it at 178, 50 acres out of it?
I trust you, yeah, I would be up here with that.
You would?
And how about the roller?
Yeah, that's, I'm okay with the way it is. Okay, you know, I'm gonna reseed it because there's nothing with blue grass in it now, which doesn't grow anything at all.
And so you're, you're all right with that $505?
Yeah. All right. But we will get that lease and mail it to you after it's already out of years. Okay.
Yeah.
I believe so, yes. Thank you very much. You bet. Two.
I'm 66, let's see, I think.
Yeah, 66.
So I would need a motion to approve the lease.
We'll just wait and, when we get the leases, get those, and we'll just, okay. We're in the process right now of getting the Zill Pit, Woodmore Pit, Hutchins Pit. Well, I gotta talk to Cody Norman here about Hutchins. Monte, too, with Zach Nielsen. So we've got those three, getting those drafted. We'll get these others three, and then I'm trying to get ahold of Bill Depew and David Blackwood. And I don't know, Bill Depew may have retired, so we may be getting a new tenant there.
Still had the pivot ready.
Yeah, the Zill Pit is with Hagan, Corey Hagan.
We redid that one, right? When we did the south most of the one thirty, right?
Okay, so getting back to these major benefit, Harrison. The first three pages of that, what I've handed out, are all counties, and it'd be the superintendent, crew supervisor, laborer, truck driver. When we fill out our salary survey, there are different classes of laborers and different classes of crew supervisors, superintendents. So there's not really a very good job description of the crew superintendent and crew supervisor. I put our foreman in as crew supervisor, so I highlighted that yellow. That's the column that I use for that. Other counties have superintendent, road superintendent, and that data is over in the left-hand corner. If you go to sheet three, what I've done is I counted the number of superintendents, counted the number of supervisors, laborers, and truck drivers. Listed the high wage and salary, the low wage and salary, the average and the median. And then I ranked it, if Cassup County, if we did have an employee in there, I ranked this, that would be from high to low. So for example, the crew supervisor, there are 80 total crew supervisors listed. The high wage is 3602, the high salary 84,284, the low 22.28 cents per hour. The salary of that converted is 52,000, average and median. Cassup rank is 41, that's from the high to the low, so there are 40. Out of that 80 number, there's 40 higher and 39 lower. Cassup's wage is 2825, Cassup's percent of the high is 78.43, percent of the low is 126.8%, and then of the average is 96.5 and 99.1. Then if you go to page four, five, and six, that's for patrol operators, heavy equipment operators, shop manager, and mechanics. And I guess I failed to say, if it's highlighted in blue, it's a neighbor. It's adjacent county, Cassup County is highlighted in yellow. All of our equipment operators are, I list all of our employees as equipment operators. And then we have our shop manager, and we have our mechanics. So again, on page six, that total, excuse me, eight. Yeah, it's six, excuse me. Got the number of people, number of employees, counties that are listed in that, what the high, what the low, what the average and median are, what the rank is again from high to low, and then what the percent of the high, percent of the low, percent of average, percent of the median. And then the last three pages, seven to nine, is longevity, what's different for longevity, what's different for individual health, or what the cost of the individual health insurance premium and family health insurance premium, what the deductibles are, and then what county contributes or pays both premium in percentage and yearly cost, and that's both for family and for single. I see there some way that column next to the left, that should be single health insurance premium county percent there.
How can that one be 112?
I called them up, there's two of them in there. One's 116, and one's 112. And what those counties actually do is they just give every employee so much money. So for example, 116, they give them $11,600 per year that you can use for your individual health insurance, or your family health insurance, or if it, so that 12%, you have to put it into some sort of a, either retirement or flexible benefit, if you have leftover. So it's a fact that they're just giving each employee, they say for this benefit, we give you this much money, and you can do whatever you want to do with it. And they give you three or four different choices, pay for your health insurance, pay for your flexible benefits, pay for putting it into some sort of retirement. But yes, that's a, that's a big question that I'll start with. And then again, on page nine, see if the pardon me.
That's deductible.
All that's the deductible, okay. There's, oh, there's green.
And for some reason, I thought I, okay, I would do it. So that gives you some information. Again, I, I think that especially the mechanics right now, mechanics aren't the band. I would ask the board to consider that, and if it's all possible to consider increasing that wage for the employees.
But the rest of the board, but for me, I think such a big change coming on the board, I'd rather, I think we should wait
I understand.
Till January.
I understand that. Appreciate it.
Send the union to start talking in the summer of January.
Usually by this time, we've actually received and replied to their proposal. We're getting close to December usually.
Yeah, when they're behind.
November, first of November, end of October, we get a proposal from the bargaining agreement, or bargaining association, and we reply back to them. And it's not been uncommon for us to actually schedule some negotiations in December. So this, this is.
Is it because you got teeny supervises coming, is that why they're meeting?
I have no idea. We just haven't received anything. I mean, the process has changed a little bit, where they're required to, through the month of October, have their elections, and they're required to do some things. So whether that's it, Galen, I, I don't know.
Do you know who the stewards are yet?
I do not. I could certainly email and see who the stewards are.
Yeah, if they changed or not, I, I have no idea.
I don't know. I'll do that.
Yes, that would be a good idea. That might. Yeah, I don't even know if they ratified the union again or not.
Tammy, we had some informal discussions, and I thought the road department did.
Yes, they did. They were the only ones that did.
They used to give us a letter as a board of supervisors.
Grant, yeah.
Uh, I haven't seen anything.
No.
But I have heard that the courthouse is going to
As, as far as the union, they're actually supposed to give us a letter.
Yeah, there's initial proposal, and, and we replied back with another proposal that we get in the negotiations. I would, I'll go ahead and email Renee as well, copy, Tammy, I'll copy you on that email with Donna and see if she is certain. All right. If there is anything, I mean, this is an Excel spreadsheet, so if the board would like to see any other calculations, feel free to ask. I'll, I'll do my best to provide the information.
I'm gonna put it in the record that no action was taken.
It's, I think it was discussed.
So they had their
Yeah, it was, it was
I got discussion decision on mine, so.
For road department wages?
No, it's just discussing.
Okay, I got it wrong. My cheat, Dan. Start.
But no, that, it's just for, this is just for discussion.
Doug, for the column with the individual health insurance premium and the family
I just
premium at the bottom with the number of kilos, prevents all that, that's all blank for those two. Is that because of, did you put all the numbers over for the individual spanning on the far right side of the percent? Or? Yeah, because there's, there's nothing for those two columns, do you see? I don't know, maybe some.
Oh, I did not. I, I, I'll put that in there.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will. Sorry about that.
That's fine.
I don't know why I did. But yeah, that should be in there. Thank you.
Yeah. When do you get that? Would you want to just email it out?
I can. I'll put it in next week's board, over to them.
Anything else on the wages? Thank you for the information.
Oh, you're welcome.
We are up to appoint manager for Cassup County Landfill and Transfer Station.
Yeah, I spoke last week, I've been visiting with Dustin Hanson. The board supervisors on their first meeting in January, appoint a manager. So I thought it was proper to, with Larry retiring, to appoint a manager. Larry retires, his effective date of retirement is November 25. The 25th is the end of our pay period. So I would recommend that the board would appoint Dustin Hanson as manager, effective November 26. And that'd be for the remainder of the calendar year.
Okay, so I have motion by Flats, second by Sacker.
I'll second, okay.
To appoint Dustin Hanson as manager of landfill, any discussion?
Let you go find a spot, fill in, right?
Yes.
So do you, do you open up that to the other road employees or anything, or it's?
Yes.
They do. Up being their employee, do they get first dibs, or does that work differently?
I consider it. I do not necessarily, yeah. In fact, Dustin Hanson was a secondary road employee when it was Gary Walker retired at the transfer station.
Any other discussion? If not, everybody in favor of the motion, please say aye. Post, motion carries unanimous.
All right, thank you.
Raptor Construction in the right of that. Why don't you add something else?
No. The first section of the road, right away, we do have a road, it may be open tomorrow night, but it's a culvert project up north on the west line of 14 and Grant Township. This would be to officially close that road. and then open it when construction is completed. And that's wanted to take action on that resolution.
The resolution number is eleven twenty-two, twenty-two oh one.
Ones and twos.
Yeah, all ones and twos. I need a motion to approve the resolution twenty-two, eleven twenty-two, twenty-two oh one. Motion by Stacker, second by I'll second it. Any discussion on the resolution? If not, do a roll call vote, please.
Stacker.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Los.
Yes.
Flack.
Yes.
Jacks.
Yes.
Sign that.
Doug Crouch.
All right, uh, the second road work within the road right of way, Kenny Lubinfall stopped in uh, last week, I think it was Wednesday or Thursday. He's doing a project up in section seven of this would be Greenwood Township crossing three hundred and eightieth street. This would be for, I just want to make sure that the board doesn't have any concerns. Gravel road, he'd be cut through the road to two different locations to drain his property, he'd be going across Jim Reese's property to get, to get his outlet. Doug Crouch had been visiting with him. The east crossing is twenty, or excuse me, the west crossing is a twenty-four inch. The east crossing is an eighteen inch and all water flows south naturally. We are getting the application. We do this all per our policy. I don't see any problems. Everything's within the drainage district. If Kenny gets all this information to us, I would like to be able to just give them the verbal to go ahead and cross that.
This is, this is private tile, right?
This is private tile, yes.
Or where are they going from Reese's, if they go through Borman's or through Ricky's?
I am not sure. I think they're going down Reese's and Ricky's. And now letting in that, that'd actually be the riverway.
It'd be a river.
No, no.
No, it's not.
No, that's a I can't remember the number of it, but they just cleaned that out. Then it gets down.
They're going west, in other words.
Well, they'd be going pretty much south. Yeah, there's a drainage district that runs on section line between Paul Borman and and Helen Ricky.
So then would, per the policy, would you have to have permission from Ricky's as well?
We do, yes. We would get all the, all the landlords that's going through the edge.
Well, I, I guess I've heard some things about this and have a little bit of concern, but I don't, I have not talked to Kenny about it specifically, so. I would like to wait till all the paperwork's in and deal with it next week if possible.
Okay. Um, the next bid is from an application submitted by Interstate Power and Light, Light Energy. Uh, they actually have two two installations. One is between section eight and section nine of Ebridge Township. Uh, that are, uh, there's a new confinement being built on the well, I'm not sure who the landlord was, but it's being built on the east side of two hundred and ten avenue, so they'd be running from five hundred tenth street, running power down our road right away to that new confinement area. And then the other one is between section twenty-three and twenty-four Springfield Township. I think the Tilgers brothers are putting this one up. They would be running on the east, west side of one hundred eighty avenue from eight twenty-one, four hundred eightieth street and going under the road to service another facility, confinement facility. And I'd recommend that the board would approve of this question.
Do I have a motion to approve the two permits? I'll make a motion to approve it. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Stacker. Any discussion on the two? Hearing now all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, very unanimous.
And the second request is from Midland Power Cooperative. They would like to bore under a B fifty-eight Galbraith Road. This would be uh, to the east of Oliver Saxon Road uh, on land owned by Claire Smith. There is some sort of a there's some sort of a water retention basin being installed on that property. They need, my understanding is they're going to pump it, pump water into it so that they can backseat tile to more or less provide water to progress.
Put on a power line underneath the road?
They would put a power line under the road to operate their water, water pump.
Well, they just put one overhead.
Uh, they chose to put it under the road. I would rather have it under the road, to be honest with you.
Yeah, so, okay, yeah.
So the pond is on the south side?
No, north.
Pond is on the north side, north of our road right away. In the, it would be in the land there that Claire Smith would be in the southeast corner.
Claire don't own anymore, she sold it.
Oh, really? She wants it?
The guy that puts the pond in.
Oh, I have not seen that.
That's what I heard about these ditches. Then he got them tiled last week. It looks like a zoo out there.
Okay.
And that pond, what's that going to do for snow removal? He's about thirty foot tall.
It's, yeah, I drove by it.
And he's blocking Gerber's surface water now too.
I would, if I was a neighbor, pass through this.
Is that?
But that's.
You look at that, it's got a little bit of a rise to the north. So Gerber's going to have one heck of a pond in there.
But it, it isn't in a drainage district?
No, but you still can't change the flow of.
I have, you can't. Something that has to be changed, you can't do that.
So you said they'd be pumping water from the north side of the road to the south?
Right, no, they have, they would, my, you're just bringing, this is a power company bringing power. It's the request.
I always thinks he's going to fill that pond. It's going to hold fifteen million gallons. It's a wet farm, but not a fifteen million gallon wet lot of water.
Yeah. Mr. Casey, you want to make a motion to approve the road crossing?
No, I don't approve that. I don't think I'm building, so no, no.
But we're approving the road crossing for electric, not anything about the pond. I
I still don't, I'm not part of the.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion to allow Midland to cross the road with the power line? Mr. Stacker makes the move. Third second. Jan, I'll ask for a second. Second by Flack. Do a roll call vote, please.
Stacker.
Yes.
Casey.
No.
Los.
Yes.
Flack.
Yes.
Jacks.
Yes.
Sign that, Roger. And there are two here to be signed. Thank you. And then the last, I got a in your electronic file, or excuse me, electronic file. Uh, Jeannie Birdie, south of the Spring Valley Golf Course, there's a file named, I think, Birdie proposal or something like that. Um, she has a farm south of the Spring Valley Golf Course. And Mark Erpolding is doing some tiling on that farm, but Mark called me last week asking if it would be okay to outlet some tile up on the northeast side of that farm. The reason being that northeast corner, if he was going to go to the west, which is the natural flow of everything, except for the northeast side, he would have to increase his cut quite a bit. Said five feet, have to increase to get that tile to flow. Uh, we have other people that outlet tile in road ditches, we permitted it as well with our permit, our agreement. We uh, say that a person is allowed to place a tile in a road ditch. However, it's not going to be the road department's responsibility to clean out that road ditch. It's not going to be the road department's responsibility to maintain the outlet, uh, those types of things. We, we have those on file for some and sometimes people just go ahead and do it. In fact, we've had a couple of times where people have put it in the road ditch and then they ask us to go ahead and clean out the ditch, so tile and drain water. Having said that, I know, I know that it's physically possible to do things, make it a west, go run west. But with this situation, uh, Birdie family, uh, Jeannie's boy owns a golf course. All that water ends up going down to a creek in, at the golf course. I think we're talking a little bit under ten acres. I don't think it's going to be a lot of water. If they do it correctly and then they sign that agreement, I think that we are checked in and I'd just like to make sure the board is, is okay while we're getting that agreement, if they would go ahead and do that work. Board is comfortable with that and give me, if I give verbal to Mark Erpolding.
So Doug, for that uh, outlet in the northeast farm, like we're talking about, it would outlet into the ditch and then would it flow to the north of the ditch and then eventually end up in the golf?
There's a creek.
And stuff?
Yeah, if you're familiar with that.
Okay, it would go all the way to the creek?
There's a creek up there.
Okay. Yep, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure I understood it right. I'm fine with that.
I'll make the motion.
It doesn't have.
Right. We don't need a motion on that.
No, just as long as.
Cause you don't have to pay for it.
Right, we've got a disagreement from Jeannie, Jeannie happens to go south. So she's in Arizona right now, I believe Arizona, Texas.
Anything else, Doug?
Um, just kind of bring you up to date on everything. The Irvington Bridge, they're going to pour that today. So I don't know if they've started or not. But the temperature's going to be about forty degrees. Will allow them to start, we're going to the temperatures around thirty-five and I don't know what that is right now. Could very well be off match in concrete, getting ready to go down there.
I was wondering how they heat the bottom, so I looked at it the other day. They got a big old LP tank there and they got about, I don't know how many heaters underneath it and put the plastic down and nice and warm.
They're gotten underneath and they got insulating blankets. They'll take those off and they will pour the concrete, get water running over, hot water. They got a big boiler system that they will be pumping water, heating water, putting heated water on top. Got to make sure that the beams and the forms, steel are all above forty degrees, which we ran down there. I haven't heard that yet. I'll go down and see. And Merriman's up at Lincoln Township, they're pouring a cap today. So that concrete's coming from Algonquin, will be up there. They're accepting that. That Fox Culver in Grant Township, they're setting sections. I think they're planning on having all sections set today, so they'll get most of that backfill tomorrow and we'll be driving over that short. The highway one sixty-nine bridge. The construction is, my understanding is construction is completed. I was up there Thursday, there's no one there. My understanding is they have to run a profilometer, which is uh, measures the smoothness of the pavement and all. And if everything would pass that smoothness, then the bridge would be open. My understanding was they did that yesterday. I don't know if any, so, sorry, they, at the time, they were planning on doing it. So that may be open. And highway eighteen, they are, they are shouldering. They got their shouldering operation going, so that is going. Still looking for the mechanic position. I did hire a gentleman by the name of Chris Cromer for the Levert position. Doing some background checks on Lone Rock, uh, interviewing for a transfer position. I received, uh, I don't know if I said last week, I received two uh, retirement notices in Taitaka. We're advertising for those receiving receiving the applications for that. And then we're also interviewing at the transfer station. I didn't say that, I just, I had to do that twice. And then the last thing that I have reviewing, I was reviewing my budget. Construction, I had four million dollars budgeted for this fiscal year. So far up to date, we've spent three million, four hundred twenty-one thousand, five hundred thirty-eight dollars and forty-two cents, which has remaining five hundred seventy-eight thousand, four hundred sixty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. Uh, looking at my estimated obligated expenses, which we do have under contract, we have eight hundred thirty-three dollars, six, eight hundred thirty-three thousand, six hundred forty-eight dollars and twenty cents. So I'm going to have to amend that construction portion, uh, the capital projects sometime. I did talk with Tammy about this. I don't know if you have any plans to amend the budget right now, but we'd like to get that done sometime.
We don't have any plans right now, but we can, I mean, there are some things that we were going to do in May anyway, so those can be added out earlier, so. But there'll be three budget amendments.
Yeah, we don't like to do them, set them as limited as possible.
Bocky, this is with Tammy about that.
Yep.
And we'll go from there.
Anything else to Doug?
How many days later they on that bridge, are they, it's on schedule yet?
No, they're, they're running late. Um, I don't know how many days it is. I have to ask that for sure.
So they get fined every day then?
There, I think it's a fifteen hundred dollar liquidated damages per day, I think is what it is.
Well, that's a, let me take one to lose your profit. There you goes.
They're going to file for a force mager?
Pardon me?
Force mager, saying that it was an outside influence, they don't have to pay it or?
All right, they get I, I, there will be discussions. That's the best way to put it.
So a couple weeks ago, they were shut down because they couldn't get a rebar. So you think when you start a bridge, you'd have your rebar over, but again?
I have. That's fine. They never said that.
Okay, because that's one of the neighbors that was down there talking to the worker, said we don't have rebar. So that's what, that's where I heard it from.
Okay. We got not yet. They, they didn't have very many employees.
No, I heard that too, there's a couple guys that go down there, keep a record, you're high on this.
But it'll be good to get that thing poured, here, backfilled, and get guardrails, bury rail on it.
Yeah, it'll be nice.
All right. Very good, Dan, thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks, Doug, we're going to take a 15, 20 minute break.
Tammy. Go ahead. I did get all your
Sorry, Barney.
Oh, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, Barney.
Yes, that's fair. When, like, come day where you have a separate county email that, yeah. Probably be soon. Yeah. No, no, I just, I was just curious. Oh, yes. Yeah. I'm on my back. Where's your head doing?
Oh, it's better.
Yeah, at least we can get such a side of Yeah, that's smart. Yeah. Didn't damage the piano, did it?
No, no, piano at the best of the game.
That's, yeah. That's, yeah.
That's all right.
That's right.
Yep. Ah, it's going to warm up a bit today.
I think so, it's going to be nice and sloppy.
Yeah, good. Stuff, we're going to clean up outside, I think, quite good too. It's, yeah, sorry.
I think it's supposed to be up to 47 today.
I'm going to hang the Christmas lights this week.
Yeah, I'm doing that too, I think.
I have the storm weather, can't do that there today. Yeah, on that, on that pond, the other, they did get in touch with Brian Dooty and stuff, and I guess I thought it was all good. I, because he called me about it, I was like, well, if they say it's good, I don't, I'm not going to pay you the money.
Well, it's not, it's not in our policy to dictate a pond outside the right of way, so I don't, whatever.
Yeah. Just the power.
Yeah.
Whatever.
All on the days, right?
That's right.
Very good time. Yeah, you got a hearing attend, what's that, you got a hearing attend? There's a completion hearing, yeah. Pull out a few minutes, yeah.
All right. What are you up to today?
We need four. They already, no, oh. A little bit. And, oh, they're like, you know, dead. Have a chance to tell them. You don't forget to be polite, you know. It didn't talk, it didn't, it was my post. Yeah, that should have been, you know, I don't, it's so bad, you can't see what they're nice best. They just started very. Yeah, people, that's one of them. Someone's had a technical, I would have to say drainage, so all there, you know, but in that right, which we want to feel like, but very that, because it's, that's it. You know, but they, they
10, 468. All trucks, all the, 300 or something. Just, basically, we're trusting. Right. You doing?
Good.
Pretty good. Break already? They're on break already? So long, or no? They're up to drains though, so it's just strange that they got a completion hearing.
Project to, hell. The project to keep going, take a break before last.
All right.
Or?
Right. Anybody look up? Place that, it's trying. Send me. Yeah. Do an opposite, okay, okay, I don't know why. I work with their great, though. Yeah. Got you. Sure.
Yeah. See you later.
All right, let's go. That community. This, it can't be this. Here. I'm going to go. They didn't say, it doesn't matter. I have to say, it's Sure. That I went to go, well, I and, and, yeah, that's, that's shot, and sounds like little guys tend to want to do this. Oh, tissue. Didn't take that stuff all day here. Yeah. Don't be a hell of a I guess I was more blown on, kind of, community events and stuff, I'll get a lot going on here for my work, and my, for finding hundreds, yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, that's right, yeah, I'm pretty close, yeah. You, you involved in the, the radio? I'm a piano player, so do most of the churches. Two. They should, they should have put that on my campaign flyer. Looking to turn up the soup down. That would have been pretty good.
Good luck.
Maybe the baseball. We're too close. Figure out, yeah. Maybe I can use that as my slogan, if you, you know. But now I, I get all around more time, so, so I'm doing that.
The training, just a closing hearing, that, this is it, or they're just going to start April?
Oh, I think this is the, the question, I'll see, this is, discussion, decision completion hearing. Referring for that one.
Both of them, you said, you'd call them down.
Completion hearing, I would think that would be it.
Decision completion hearing.
Yeah. Doug, are you this close to me?
Okay. They can see that, verified. They can see that, verified. That's what they're considering. I had been in the first place, but I didn't need to. Actually, what I want is to just do a, find your project, but they could maybe in a bigger project.
Well, yeah, I was, I was kind of going to start that. He just kind of wanted to, private, I just kind of wanted to run it separately. I don't know if they made, I was looking at that, thought it was fair, fair, see that? I'm sure I don't have too much to say, so I think they can, and they have to prepare. Then I heard that they put a bigger pipe in, laid a flag, but then, yeah. I was part of the concern, because they didn't want that, they don't want that, so very, you know, it more fall, which you were more fast, they, well, and that wasn't, that ain't no engineer, they were saying, we say, just lay the flag down. You know, the game down, because that was a problem, and you had like, far, it was tragic. And not shallow, do a bigger pipe, and they can closer the problem. You know, to, yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, computers, well, computers, big problem, yeah. You know, that 34 grand, we put in, and for everybody on the all the way, you know, something, it wasn't yet, she wasn't liable on the compensation, I didn't pause for that.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's all in the records, I think that started in 18. I would just give it back. It's been, it's been tough, it's been what's going to take a little while. There's a, the, the, yeah, they paid, they paid for it. Yeah, on a, on a, on a, on a, right, what they did, yeah. Oh, I see what you're saying, I don't want it, they covered up. Yeah, you know, see, that one was done in Yeah, that, that was, that was part of the 84 open ditch project, and then that, all the last we done. You know, when, I think that 15, that one was done. It was done, please, I didn't know what the, the client was only thing, but, and there was a lot of that record, it shows the different tracks, and how much they paid. That's part of the damage. But it's always, always still that whole area, there is a little farm that was planted, probably a lot of the, since you're there. There's nobody up there that's one that can see this. Get out, I'm double counting. Yeah, right. Like, they were down the line, so it's a lot of things, they're going to file fees at that apartment. You probably won't get it done. Now, that diesel go again, so I just, right, it's going to be harder. The point that, the drain, and they all signed, let's drain it until they got the bill. Yeah. This one guy he was talking about, and I know the piece of ground, he said he, he didn't have any, you know, like, ground or anything, and then, you know, what he had to pay with some, just fair and all that, I mean, jeez, it's cool, and I'm just like thinking it would be nuts. I think he had more water on it than he did for a whole, bro. Yeah, without, I was, they, funding was starting to come, I think. Yeah, that's right, yeah. I'll buy a cheap farm to detail, that would be better, I'm better on the, yeah, if, if it's available, right. Talk about the, the, the I was Yeah, they did, they, yeah, that's all, I did fulfill. So, what's the theory? Well, I walked in right at the tail end of the job, it's here. Basically, you just brought up, they're looking to purchase an ambulance, but the current timeframe on it, it's like 24 months, so they're trying to get them purchased, and now using that, I'm not going to say good, besides, they're spending money, so it's a good and they're reacting to, well, they're, they're talking, probably use more, probably store it. They just hired two employees. Yeah, so he was saying they hired a new part-time, new full-time, they're interviewing paramedics soon, or something like that, so they're hiring people, they got some stuff, the state, new ventilator systems that the state actually provided the county free charge, so we can arrange that, so I had other plans. The just morning.
Morning. Good morning.
I know.
Next challenge.
We can pass it on to. Anytime. Oh, I just want. I can point it out. Definitely. It was coming big change. You know. Against this. I can from what. Off the road by. If you're fighting, you know. It's regarding. Challenging. Yeah. All standing, I'll serve.
Fine.
Help. For rich man.
Good morning, Marge.
It's still. Yeah.
Okay, Marge, you got any requests for us?
Do the orders, they did that.
I don't know, we use the new request first, or whatever you want.
Yeah.
There it is. So you want to start with the payout one for DD four. Lateral eleven open ditch cleanout? We have a. Pay request. Right seal excavating for the twenty-one thousand four hundred and eleven dollars. Any discussion on rights of pay request? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve? So moved. Motion by Stecker. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion on payout? One for DD four open ditch. Lateral eleven. Hearing none, all those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Host. Motion carried. Next, we have a. Approval for payout number one on DD sixty sub one tile improvement. For a hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. Well, I have a motion to approve the payout for. DD sixty sub one to Zachary Lubentaw. Escavating.
So moved.
I have motion by Stecker, do I have a second? Again, I'll call for a second on the payout one for DD sixty sub one. Second. Second by class. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do a real call hold, please.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Gloss.
Yes.
Flack.
Yes. Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Next, we have a discussion decision for landowners' request to use spoils on the open ditch on the right of way. Uh, your name's on the motion, Mr. Stecker.
Yeah, um, Jim Vaske had called me, Keith Vaske has, um, ground on the east side of the dead. Well, actually both sides of the ditch, but kind of on the east side of Bancroft there. And they would like to use the dirt. They had, they were ones I had mentioned before when Rich was requesting to get dirt off the ditch. And at that time, they were undecided whether they wanted it or not, but they had mentioned it to me. And I got a call here this last week asking for that, if that could be done. I said it could be put on the agenda and brought up and, um. Jim said he had a letter, whatever, that from Keith that I think he was wanting to read, but I don't see him here, so. I guess that's what I have, but that's who was requesting, so. I called Marge about putting it on the agenda, same as we did the last time.
I think the guy will be here and tell us what he wants it for, like Rich did. Rich gave us a ten, fifteen minute, uh, speech on what dirt was being used for.
Is he using it on his own ground or?
He didn't specify to me, I, I'm sure they'd be using it for their own stuff, I would imagine, but he said he would be here. I told him it would probably be around nine thirty, but I said, we have a hearing in ten, so I said it would be. Somewhere between nine and ten, but I anticipated nine thirty and. He's not here, but he might be on his way, he might be. Five minutes away, I have no idea. Do you want me to try calling him?
Oh, we got.
Or do you want us to leave it for later and just wait on it or? I guess.
Why don't we just pass over it?
For now.
Yeah, see if he comes.
Yeah. That's fine, but that's, that's what it's on the agenda for.
And we'll. Go to drainage request, Marge. He's one. Subbed. Thinking. Do you have a request to install a culvert in a? DD four?
Yeah, that's what it looks like here.
Uh. Do you know any of the specifics on it?
I had not heard anything until the request here, so I don't know.
Vince came in and, um, Doug, he talked to Doug Crouch. And so the trustees have to approve it first. They can allow the driveway permit. Whatever you want to put on this property for, so open ditch for dream.
Oh, and we, we can't approve an open ditch unless you have an engineer's report on the size of the.
I said that.
Price. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say as well, because the private crossings we've had before have to be sized by the engineer, so.
So we, we can't approve anything on this today.
Well, we can approve, we can approve the request to acknowledge that, but then I think we would need to have it on the agenda next week to appoint an engineer on it. And keep be responsible for the costs. For sizing it.
So that's according to the drainage laws or, or the counties?
Yeah, in the past, we usually didn't approve the request until we knew what size the pipe was going to be and if the engine, can't be hired an engineer or not. Because we're approving going across the grid stitch. I have an issue with that until we know.
Or do we acknowledge it?
We can acknowledge it, but I'm not, I don't think you should approve the question.
That's fine. I think we would need to acknowledge it to say we received it, so it's the, but.
He needs to be here to discuss with us, all of us, what he's got, what is right.
What his plans are and if he's gonna hire an engineer. I think there's a bridge on both ends of that mile, isn't there?
Well. I was just kind of pulling that up, I'll get back to it here in a second, but. I would want to say he would have property. To the road. Oh, it parallels the road on that, so he would have to have a process in there. Sure, we got that from, or whatever, it's like. Should have had access to it somehow when he bought it, I would have thought.
Is this something he just bought?
Assuming so, I don't know for sure. He might have had it for a while. But I'm not sure why he would, crossing paths, the ditch would have been there for a while. But I know the other one north of Bancroft or, um. Big Nerd needs, they had to, believe they had to pay the engineering and all that and have it sized appropriately and. Then it was installed by the district, but it was. Or it was, they, they paid for all the costs. I don't know if they had it installed privately or not, but I know they paid for all the costs.
Oh, that's what we did on the one by Leadyard.
Yeah.
The, the district pays to put it in?
No.
No, the landowner does.
Landowner pays, but first we had.
But it's like it's overseen by the district, so it's done directly.
Yeah. Because if he puts a pipe in and, and even if we. Say that he can, if it's not sized correctly. It'll be taken out and it'll be all double cost.
And it'll in, impact everyone upstream.
Right. So just let the record show that we acknowledged the request and we'll wait for an engineer's report.
I, and then, yeah, I would say we should have on the agenda to appoint an engineer for this request.
I will let him have an engineer that he wants to do.
I, that should give a district.
Like we've done in the past, we let them choose an engineering firm that they want to work with. As long as their license. But if you have different ideas, we'll bring it up next week.
Yeah.
Do you want to get this?
Um, discussion, decision, appointing engineer on this request number sixty-three.
And Vince is gonna pay for it, you better run it by Vince before you.
He can, he should be here for the meeting too, but.
You're, you're, you're treading on, yeah, can I see your Mr. Stecker spending somebody else's money?
Yeah, you better have a, you better have a discussion with him.
He should be here for it, for next week.
So you're gonna talk to him?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, it'll be on the agenda. That is numbers on there.
Any other discussion on the tile request? Marge, anything else?
Yep. I do have another drainage thing. I did get a call last week, uh, from Vince Johnson on DD four, the dirt. He reminded me that a drainage attorney told us we had one of two options. To either. Have the people took the dirt off, pay for the dirt or bring the dirt back. And he's just wondering what we're gonna do with that, and I guess I'd like it taken care of before I leave office. So if you want to put it on the agenda for next week, or we want to deal with it, or?
Yeah, why don't we put it on agenda for next week? If we get, uh.
Get ahold of Hudson.
Hudson to have everyone, the owner have him here.
Well, now we've got the letter from Jim here, and we've got Rich that was approved to take dirt off already, so. I guess that'll play into that conversation.
Well, I guess that these guys had permission, you guys didn't. Hey, Rich, couple masses before he dumps the dirt.
Yep, three times.
I'm just saying, it happens for them, we can do it from drainage ditch.
DD four, yeah.
Discussion.
Yeah, Rich uses it on his own land, didn't he?
Well, Rich asked us before, you did, you moved it.
But that dirt, there you go, Bob, was, was using it all land, it was all up to town and stuff, it was all stuff, well, my hurts yourself.
Yeah. Hey, Jim, uh, you made a request, Mr. Stecker, to use some dirt off the open ditch.
Did he have a letter there to read or?
I.
I saw him writing something.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll just pass it down. So it's, it's for using your private property.
Pretty great, yeah.
Okay.
I was reading it, so it's public.
Yeah.
I'd like to take dirt off the ditch bank of Mud Creek that they put up on the top of my grass. I want the dirt for a building. Also, Dad would like his private tile that they covered up, located fixed.
So. Without point. Jim, that private tile, that's. Do you know about where it dumps into the ditch at?
They dug it up across, but I don't think they, they.
Oh, they didn't find it.
No, they didn't, they didn't find it. I.
Okay.
I told them when we talked, we'd have to probably look at that next spring or.
Well, we're gonna have to have them come back. Come back and look at it then, before we do the final.
Yeah, but I mean, at this time, they're not gonna probably be able to find it now, so.
Well, they're still digging. If they wanted to, they could go out there and dig it up, yeah.
They could, they could pro still.
You want to get ahold of McCarthy and see if you gang in to find it this year?
I can try. There hasn't been much water either, so it might be hard to find that way, but.
It'll be kind of nice to have it on before we close the project out.
How much dirt do you, you gonna need, Jim? How much dirt are you gonna need?
It's pretty deep.
No, the dirt, the dirt you're gonna take out.
We gotta fill quite a bunch in for a van.
So that's black dirt and mud, right?
Right.
There's no gravel on it?
It is, it's probably not good for the paths.
More if that's good, probably equals bad, nobody wants some gravel, so it's a bad state.
Well, it's silty, there.
Hangout packer. You're good, oh, is it?
Hmm. Principally, they got clay with it, because some of it's side bank, they should have some clay.
Yeah, it's probably got it mixed, but I don't know. Depends on the area, so.
It was relatively deep where Jim was.
Before you do it, you might want to take the van gag, because when I put up my last. Ben guy, because when I put up my last band, they wanted to come check out my dirt, make sure it worked, otherwise they wouldn't let me use it. Because their name's on the bed, so you might wanna have them come out, take a look at it and say, this is what I'm gonna use. These sets of backers did out of St. Jill for me several years ago.
Okay, well, do it.
Well, backers, yeah, they come out, they inspected my dirt and then they said. This'll work, and I said, what if it wouldn't? We ain't putting our bet on it. So I do some checking on that, so you don't move all the dirt and you gotta take it all off me. Redo it.
Otherwise, anybody have an issue with Jim using some of the spoils?
Oh, yes, we removed it.
Let the record show that there's no issue. I don't think we need to make a motion.
Good last time.
Didn't. Okay. I would move that we allow Jim to use spoils. Second. Second by flat. Any more discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion opposed. Motion carried. I thought everybody voted aye. Go ahead, Jim, but yeah, you might wanna check to see if they want it.
Dirt like when you go off the road. It's really deep there, so.
Yeah.
There shouldn't be plenty dirt there.
Well, there's plenty dirt. You probably want a little clay mixed in with it.
Yeah. There might be a little clay in it too.
Yeah. It makes better feel. And as far as the private tile, we'll see. Stecker will see if he's gonna hold it on.
See, we couldn't probe it, but we had a bean field there, there is. I'll. I was. It's right at east of that. And you could, like, there was a big bean field there, we had a combine beam, after that. They dragged across it. And couldn't find it. But I don't think they dug deep.
Mm-hmm.
And you can't probe it now because this ground is so hard.
Yeah. Well, you couldn't have probed it last summer either, it was dry. Yeah.
Let's go that deep, yeah.
Or we can take dirt off of there then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You. Wanna talk to the contractor yet this fall and see if he can't find that private tile if he gets a chance?
Uh, yeah, I could, what, uh. So I came in the middle of the conversation.
Yeah, Jim, Jim's got a private tile that they didn't find.
Bancroft, Keith Basky's property, I'll.
Okay, okay, yeah.
You want.
We'll, uh.
Contact.
Yes, give me the information we can get.
Once you get us in Jim about the approximate location. Before we have the hearing start at ten o'clock, you can just, we'll do that now.
Well, that's nothing to do with it.
Your word, your title.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, we ain't gonna do nothing till ten o'clock anyhow.
There was a tunnel sticking out, when they come along, they just.
Rifted it out.
It ripped it right out, it was a pass of time.
What? Yeah.
So.
So then we, a pipe put on it now.
Right.
Well, we don't.
Should probably be a pipe.
It should be a pipe.
It's supposed to be, yeah.
Okay, attack one, we just did a repair, some of the ones that they lost, forgot about.
Yeah, I know, but just, we haven't finished it yet. We'll have to do a repair if. We don't get it done until the project is closed down. Could've just been added cost if you had to do that.
Fair, you would agree.
Yeah, because the guy's only. He's got so many tubes in there, I think. This is on you. They were. They did, they were in the check for. They were for by the top. I was interested in, Vince, it's expensive, at least if you want, but it's missed by.
Yeah, yes.
Working on my turn of section, section, that's a bridge, right?
I learned through section nineteen.
Sorry.
East, was east side of the ditch. Right south of the gravel road.
Yeah.
That would be Ramsey nineteen, but this, and this area. Do you know how big a tile you think it is?
Right, I ain't sure. Yeah.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I can contact, get the. Look for that, there's my old card contact information on that, so. Oh, we'll get that down. Or do our best to, do our best to find it.
Thank you.
You bet.
Got any more information on DD four?
Uh, no. Other than, I talked to the contractor, apparently he had. They attempted to send, I don't know what happened, whether the file size was too big or. Uh, but we're working on him to get the. Letter from him for a. Request for extension.
Okay.
Um. Because then we'll have. We'll have the next Tuesday to to do that before the actual date comes up. Um. They were, they were making really good progress west of one sixty-nine cleanup and everything, and then they just. Ground froze up. Snowed.
We still have the issue with Pat McNertney and his bridge plank.
Um. Yeah, I don't know. The last I had heard is that there were. Bridge planks gone missing, some heartburn on that.
Yeah, he's. Wrote a letter, he wants reimbursed.
Okay.
Can you forward that to him?
Yeah, I don't know, as I've, I don't know, as I've seen anything formal on that, it's.
Forward that to him, so if he wants to take care of it before, otherwise we'll have to take it out of the. Ten percent.
It should be dealt with at the completion hearing.
Yeah, if that's, I mean, that, it it's. It would technically be a damage complaint, so it. It could be something that. But we, but that doesn't mean that we have to get it all of that ironed out, then we can. I could have discussions with.
Well, I think it'd be better if you had some discussions before.
Yeah, had, had some sort of consensus going in.
Right.
So we're not screaming at each other at a completion hearing over it, so.
Because that would come out of the contractor, right?
I.
Shouldn't come out of the drainage.
Well, I, I mean, I would.
In, drainage district didn't take the look.
Right, no.
He's. Got an official letter to the. Or supervisor.
Yeah, I could, I could see that being the easier of the arguments to make. Um, when I did first hear about it, I went through and looked. Uh. In the drone videos, you can, you can see them.
Yep.
Um. So it's. But, I mean, that. There, there's the two ways to look at it, right? Because that's. The contractor did take and remove them, but that's kind of, they were stored in the right of way, that's. It. It would at no point ever be the district's responsibility. I don't think. It would either be. On the contractor for having removed and disposed of them or. On the landowner for having. Stored them. In a place where they knew a ditch cleaning. Was going to happen. Those are the two arguments that I could see. Being made. I'll try to.
I think it was very appropriate of you to get some. Something done before.
I will, yes, yeah.
Because then we're gonna have to make a decision that day. With maybe limited information. I would rather have it done before the closing.
Absolutely, yeah, yes, you got it. Uh, and looking with that extension, we, you know, to a potential extension, I.
So.
Have. Little bit of time.
If he gets an extension, we will have to write a letter to Mr. McNertney telling him that there's an extension. Because he was under the assumption we were closing it in last of January or the first of. I mean, last December or the first of January.
Right, yeah, and I, when I. The McNertney stopped into our office, when I, I talked to him briefly a couple of weeks ago, just about how the. Project was progressing and all that, and I was still hopeful at that time that we could get it done. By that, but it just, we ran out of. We ran out of workable days and it was. You know, it's nothing to do with like any of the excavation or or anything like that, it was just. If we'd done the leveling and cleanup that was. Going to be required, we'd have run down more crop acres. And so in an effort to save those crop acres. We saved it till after harvest, that only gave us. So much time and it wasn't, and it wasn't enough, you know, there's. So those are the two schools of thought. On it, and of course, we went the one way that froze up and.
Yeah.
Didn't work, that's. Damned if we do, damned if we don't, in some situations.
I would rather not have to have attorneys involved with the.
Yeah, no, me too, that's always, yeah, that's.
Right.
It's kind of my, yeah. It's not number one, but it's high up there on my list of.
Not wanting to.
Yeah, rules to live by is.
Yeah.
Nothing against them, find, find people, it's just the. Situations we skip. I'd just rather not, again, I totally understand, I will. Work through it, yeah. Did we, Marg, have you received any sort of? Letters or anything for today?
No, I, I got a letter here. You, you got a copy of this one? From the McNertney, the last one he.
Oh, I'm, I'm talking about, uh, the hearing in a couple minutes.
I have.
It's only, it was only a couple of landowners that would have that.
Yeah, they're calling.
You can, you can read this one.
Okay.
Take it along with you.
Okay.
I've heard nothing about. Five twenty-eight. You got. Like, because it was copied, like, please could be scanned it out, well. Does he have any? Crop damage from twenty-eight?
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, it's all, it's all in there. I mean, you haven't any new ones?
One and one, there you are.
The one to myself. I had to share back here, but, so, for the hearing coming up, if you guys. Interested? Did you have any, guys? I did. Oh, perfect, yes, this is for the hearing coming up. One minute, just a couple minutes.
It's ten o'clock. Do I have a motion to? Open up the hearing on Greenport lap twenty-eight? I have a motion by flat.
Second.
Second by Stecker, you will call both, please.
Stecker.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Jerk.
Yes. Fine. You're up.
All right, thank you. Morning, all. I'm Colin Holden, Baldwin Bank. I'm the engineer that oversaw the construction of the. Drainage district number four, Level Twenty-Eight Tower Repair Project. I'll go through the reports that I handed out here. The first page serves as the certification of project completion, that the project was. Done in. accordance with the contract and the specifications. For which it was bid. The next page then is the completion report. It's got the summary of the bid activities from the bids received this last April. Uh, the low bid, the high bid there, and what the engineer's estimate was, this was right around the time of, uh. Concrete pipe prices being. Inflated, so that's the. Differences to see there. Work started in May of this year and was substantially completed September twenty-first. Of this year, we held off. Uh. A little bit on the. Completions, uh, with the elections, so. The original contract prices. There is two hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred dollars. There is a rather large. First change order of fifty-three thousand, three hundred ninety-two dollars, that was. Because the connection with the. Lateral sixty-two was. Uh, an additional distance from where it was originally drawn on the. Uh, establishment flats. It was, I think, up to. It's close to three hundred feet in difference in length, further into the field than was. Originally intended. But it ultimately didn't change, there was no need for a change of any sort of grade or pipe size, it's just a, a straight line to the connection. There was another change order there of less three thousand, four hundred fourteen dollars and eighteen cents. This was for the rectification of quantities or. Uh, reduction of rock usage and, uh, pipe, private pipe connections essentially, is what is in that change order. For a total completed work of three hundred forty-five thousand, seventy-seven dollars and seventeen cents. Of which all but ten percent has been paid, the typical drainage on drainage projects. Additionally attached to this document are the damages. For the. Landowners that resulted from the work being performed. There is a tabulation of all of the different parcels that were affected by landowners and also a map. Last page of the document that displays those damaged areas and what they were. The majority of the damaged area was corn, there was some. Buffer along some grass, uh, pathway along the lane that was damaged. Uh, but the, again, the bulk of that being corn. We also consider. For a. Width. Of fifteen feet either side over top of the tile. We consider that because of the heavy compaction and soil mixing, we denote to that a future. Damage payment, uh, which. Insists of. One additional field loss. Uh, in the thought that that will, that will take several years before it reaches. Full productivity. Again. So those are. Attached, I've been told we did not receive any objections to. The areas or the amounts. Specified. On the. Report. Uh, the. At the acceptance and the close of this hearing, that will start the. Contractors' one-year maintenance. Period, where in that time, if it's found within a year that there's failings due to. Uh, the contractors. Work, they should be made to return to repair. Those. Damages. Elsewise. Don't know that we have any directly affected landowners with us. Uh. I'll say the project went. Very well, uh. Again, my only complaint, I think I've stated this before, but my only. The real only complaint I had of the project was that it was tough to get concrete pipe from time to time, but that was. Out of the contractor, the district's control, um, the workmanship, the came right in on grade. They were, Holland was, was very good to work with, very professional, did good work, so. They were, Allen was, was very good to work with, very professional, did good work, so.
Okay, you're still dropping right there, hooking them up.
What's that?
That's tile, right?
But no, that was a path that we had to take because.
I'd hate to step around here, but.
There's, there's the open ditch, there's that lateral open ditch that, that travels up to about here that cut that tile in half. So the service area up here no longer flows down to here, it flows into this ditch here. So, yes, so actually to access the area, they had to drive down this access lane and along the ditch and then along, along the main open ditch to get to their work area. So that's what represents that small spring of corn and buffer.
Otherwise, they would have had to cut through the field.
Right.
It did the least amount of damage.
Yes, yeah, we took the, we took the most direct path that we could, leaving the smallest footprint that we could. I should also say, uh, it, it's worth noting, uh, that because there is also the ditch cleanup project going on on this, these only reflect the damages for this project. Uh, the, the damages related to the ditch come at the completion of that, of that project. But it could be a little confusing for landowners if they, if they think that they're just, you know, I don't want people getting upset thinking they're just getting this when the ditch project is also for.
Two separate things.
Yep. Other than that, any?
Any discussion from anybody on lateral twenty-eighth for drain port? Being nothing, Mark, you have no letters. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing on DD floor, lateral twenty-eight.
So moved.
Motion by Stecker, second by. I'll second it. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? Hearing now, do a roll call vote, please.
Stecker.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Flack.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes. The hearing is closed. Now we're up to making a decision on paying out the thirty-four, five oh seven point seventy-two for the contractor. And you want two separate motions and then paying out the crop damage, correct?
I think in two would be fine.
I would suggest that we do two. Do I have a motion to pay the amount due to the contractor with the completion? I have motion by Mr. Stecker. Do I have a second?
Payments to, just to add to that, that payment should be made thirty days after.
Closing.
Right, yep.
Again, I'll ask for a second. I'll make the motion, or I'll make the second on that motion. Again, the motion is to pay thirty-four thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and seventy-two cents to Allen Contracting for the closing of the construction. Any discussion on the motion? There ain't no discussion. Do a roll call vote, please.
Stecker.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Flack.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes. Motion carried. Next, we have crop damages.
Should this be to accept the report and the crop damages contained within that?
I believe that would be appropriate, yeah.
Yeah. We would need a motion to accept the closing report and the crop damages.
I would make that motion.
I have a motion by Stecker. Do I have a second? Second by Flapp, total damages are seventeen thousand, four hundred dollars and sixty cents. Do I have any discussion on the crop damages and the closing of the report? Being nothing, do a roll call vote.
Stecker.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Flack.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yeah.
Anything else, Tyler?
That's, uh, that's it. I'll take care of the other things we talked about related to port.
Good.
Other than that, I, I think that's it for me.
I've had some discussion that there was a lot of extra pipe orders before that got returned to the contractor.
Uh, that's possible, but nothing that the district has paid.
That's what I mean. When you do the report, you might want to make a notation of that.
Okay.
Because there are people that don't understand that.
Good, that's, as I, from the conversations I've had, um, contractor for saw uh, jumps in metal prices, so, and they, they knew that they were going to continue doing various types of work like this. So they ordered when it was, when it was low. Uh, but, but they're, it's not a, obviously not at the district's expense. Again, we only pay what's installed and that will be noted.
Make that notation.
I will.
Anything else for Tyler? Thanks, Tyler.
Please, thanks, guys.
Yes.
All, thank you.
Yeah. Do I gotta sign more? Mr. Stecker, do you have anything per board report?
Yeah, there's a training meeting down in Des Moines for workforce development. There's a couple bicycle packets here that they handed out. But a lot of it stems around to the process of getting compliance that we've been working on for the last three to four years. And in this, I'll probably go into more detail here. It'll be next week or whatever, but probably before the end of the year, we'll have to have something on the agenda about our area and the merge blocks we've been having. Central or, or central region. It's an Humboldt, Webster, and some of those. They have, should I have this here? North Central Iowa is comprised of Pocahontas, Humboldt, Wright, Hamilton, Webster, and Calhoun. And the, the big piece that I definitely was presenting to us was about having a local grant recipient as one of the steps in the process and where the money flows. Starts at federal level, passes through IWD, and then it comes down to the local areas, so. There's some things that will have to be done on that, a relatively short timeframe, but currently, we are still two separate regions. Even though we are talking about merging, these actions will probably need to be done in some sort of conjunction if we are going to go forward with merging, so. Probably have that on the agenda sometime soon, but figuring some stuff out on that again.
Mr. Casey.
Hello, well, this meeting on Wednesday morning. Yeah, with this ugly sweater inside. Nothing to say. We're gonna have the side of the yard again. And the people calling in the pipeline again, supposedly they changed their route. And could be closer south in a way, I understand it. Bit of half three-quarter mile, that probably be about quarter mile away now. And I had some different calls on driveways and I told them I think I get hold of Doug for that stuff. That's about it.
Just clock. Got care connections, seven noon and just took up calls on the pipeline also, you know, and I got a call from, you know, a person that said, you know, like we talked, Story County is getting sued by Summit for their ordinance that they put in.
Yeah, so Shelby.
Shelby is too. Those.
Yeah.
They had early childhood Monday at nine thirty in Bancroft.
We had a North Iowa, uh, community action meeting on Tuesday night. And so far this year, they spent eleven million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. Three hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-four was on case management and head start programs. They have served eleven thousand, three hundred and forty-five families so far this year. Head starts, a big issue with them trying to find buildings for head starts. Some of the schools don't want to allow them to use the buildings for head start, even when they have room, which I find kind of counterproductive because tax dollars pay for the schools. Why shouldn't, if they have room, why shouldn't head start be able to use them? Oral and mental health, their budgets are eating Wayne by a lot of use this year. They're gonna have to do a budget planning workshop again, probably next month, or in January. And talk about the WIC program. A lot of people on WIC, more than what I've ever thought.
That's what women and the children, right?
Yeah. And then we met with Summit on Friday. They came in and wanted to see our policy on crossing drainage district facilities. And Boop was in and Rita Meyer was here. They were glad to be here. We had a policy. And they were more than willing to follow it. And they were talking about, I said that it would be our prerogative to have them pothole everything before they even get close to it, find it, know the size, condition, where it's at, and they were fine with that. And, uh.
Private tile, they're just gonna blow through it.
No, they're not gonna, no, they're gonna have to bore under everything.
Under private tile.
No.
That's, that's not our.
That's on the private tile, they just blow through.
With them, that's not.
Whatever they make to agreement with the landowner.
So what if it's eminent domain? What's the agreement with the landowner there for the tile?
Whatever agreement they can make with them.
Lot of guys tell me already that, well, my tile goes through this person's property and they signed, so if I have drainage problems, I'm suing that landlord. I've been told by people that already.
Yeah.
Which they.
They can't do anything about.
Oh, we can't do that, but they do have the right to go after that person, right? Being that they signed.
That's something they should talk with their attorney on. That's not anything that involves us.
They're pretty well sure it's gonna go through and that they're gonna get to use eminent domain. That's all I did last week. I'm with our auditor.
See about how you wanna handle budget requests. We've got some, we've already had two scheduled for December. These county athletic development always likes to be raised early in December, so does the library. So that was for scheduled before the election. But do you want me to schedule them in December or?
Start off.
I'm getting, yes, I'm getting them out.
It's ready for us to make budget decisions on.
My naming going on.
Well, these are just the requirements.
Just the request, yeah.
Do the actual budget afterwards. These are just, they're bringing in the requests as long, so we don't have to take any action on that.
Correct.
Subtlety, yes, I wanted to see.
Yeah, I'd like to have done.
I think, I think if we knew that, the new board member should be included in scheduling for that if they're available or not.
They didn't do that when we got here.
We were consulted on that, yeah, we were.
Just, you know, this is information, so no action taken, so I think, yeah.
Okay, because last year we had a day where we had most of them scheduled the same day, so I'll probably do that again.
That would be good, get us, yeah, get them done.
All right.
Well, we can't cut it too short.
No.
We got timeframes, we gotta get everything done, yeah.
So, okay. And then I've talked about this before and things have changed when I first took office. I was told by Secretary State's Office and I said that it wasn't a good idea to have a Facebook page in the auditor's office, and now we're being told opposite. What I think was it's good, it provides small information to people about all the changes, action security and other stuff going on, so now a lot of auditor's office, do you have Facebook pages? So before I checked into it any further, I wanted to know what you guys felt about it. Because Facebook in general isn't allowed in the court house, so if we get a Facebook page, it would be just.
Why we can't use our, our webpage? Click on the auditor to get all that information right there.
The reason that they use it is because a lot of people are on social media that don't go onto websites to check for information. This would be like news releases and learns and giving people daily information and that stuff.
I don't, I guess Twitter and I don't, and all the other ones, I don't know. I'm, I'm not against it, but I mean, pretty soon you're posting on four different ones.
We can control our, our website. We can't control social media. Too much junk on social media.
I'd say something to brainstorm for now, but I'm, I mean, I don't have a strong opinion either way right now, but it is a good information tool.
We have a good, good webpage. It's very, has a lot of information on it. I have no problem getting to it. Yeah. Click at any office you want. I mean, I, I don't see a reason I have.
I just.
That's my opinion.
We need to have a board picture.
Yeah, next week?
Yeah. Can we have a board picture, please, please?
We need evidence that you were here. Oh, yeah.
So, plus however we wanna dress next week for our vision, please. Thank you.
Oh, I put it in there, I'll forget. Maybe I'll remember, like, you said, it's, it's like a time limit here somewhere. Yeah. Anything else? Come for the good pursuit count.
I got one comment. I was just thinking, in regards to, I, I talked to Henry Stone for quite a while the past week. They're representative in regards to pipeline and, and he said, that's first on the docket that we talked about in state legislature, as soon as they resume session here in January, so, and he said before the IEB will make a decision on eminent domain, the state will have discussed the eminent domain in the legislature. So I guess be watching that and, uh, um, because the bill right now that they're proposing, whether that's the exact bill that'll get to the floor or not, is that if you get ninety percent of, of easements, then, then you can use eminent domain for like projects. So see where that goes.
Is that for come, you perceive of all?
For part of the project.
That's for, that's for use of eminent domain in general.
But there's, there's another one out there that's sixty percent.
Well, that's about how many easements they have current.
I know, but there's another bill out there that's gonna get brought up to sixty percent.
You know, I see how that goes, but.
It should not even be a, be a discussion point because it's not a utility. And those are, eminent domain was, was the only reason it was put in place was for utilities.
He said that they would be discussed before the IEB makes a decision. He said that they would be discussed before the IEB makes a decision.
Well, they gotta appoint somebody new to the IUD's board too.
There's three seats and they can't never get kicked off.
Uh, yeah, and I'm just gonna get kicked off. There, I think so. That's what I heard to the pipeline.
One, one that doesn't want the eminent domain.
I ain't saying that.
I heard two of our four once again, you know, getting kicked off.
Anything else? Do I have motion to adjourn? There, second. Have motion and second adjourn and all over the papers. Say aye.
Aye.
All right, close.
We're done. You guys all have a good day. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. I'm gonna try.
What do you think we can do? Go for it. You had one? I hope you lost it. Probably one of the things I got sure of is that, yeah, we're, we don't put them up on the wall anymore. We're so ashamed.